Seven o'clock, so I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order and have clerk Paul roll, please.
Dr. Ramona Becker?
Here.
Guy McDonald?
Here.
Betty Martine?
Here.
Diane Nguyen?
Here.
We have the quorum, Mayor.
Wonderful, thank you. And with all of our meetings, we will begin this one with a moment of silent prayer. If you'll join me in that, please. Now, please rise and join us in the saying of the Pledge of Allegiance, the American Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Want to welcome everybody to our first meeting of 2008, or 2018, of your Bel Air City Council. Folks up here know it's been crazy, five minutes here, so welcome everybody in the audience and everybody listening and watching at home. The first thing to come before the council this evening is item six, which is our consent agenda, consisting simply of the minutes of the December nineteenth, two thousand seventeen city council meeting.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve this consent agenda as listed and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second. First and second, are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Next item is approval of appropriations ordinance twenty eighteen dash oh one. Again, the first one for our calendar year here. This amount totals two hundred and twenty thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars and forty cents. This is the start of the new year and therefore low for expenses. Three large purchases were made, include the lots. Over there in Kappelman's addition, there was forty-one thousand dollars for Wichita Water and the new heat and AC units at the rec center, which were badly needed. And the rest was for just day-to-day operations, including salaries. Questions or comments about appropriation ordinance eighteen dash oh one?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to make just a comment. Been on the council for a little over a year and I'm still noticing that we're paying lease payments on all of the printers and what have you. And we have requested that we kind of bring some of those leases to an end, as that's an expensive way to buy desktop printers.
If that's a motion, I second it.
Thank you.
I concur with that. I noticed that on there, too. You know, printers are so cheap to buy and you get quite a bit of good out of them, so something to think about.
Appreciate the comments and certainly that's something absolutely taken or advisement.
Uh, Ms. Mayor, we had a motion and I seconded it.
Oh, you seconded the motion?
I seconded the motion. Certainly did.
Or to not want on the agenda for that, but I would entertain a motion to approve appropriations ordinance eighteen oh one.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we do have first and second. Any other questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Now, Mr. Mayor, we had two motions made, basically. You were correct in going with the first motion, but our councilwoman Diane Nguyen made a motion and I seconded it and I would like to have action on that motion.
Actually, I don't believe she made a motion. She made a comment. There was no formal motion made.
Mr. Well, I disagree with that, Mr. Mayor. And I would like to have, I will make the motion to do what our councilwoman Diane Nguyen made. That's a motion made. Do we have a second to that or not?
Hearing none, I'm gonna proclaim the motion dead.
Oh. Okay.
We'll have to leave that to the next council.
Yes. That's fine.
And that certainly, and we do have a staff that looks at that and I know have trust and faith in our staff, that they will certainly be looking at those expenses. I know that's something that we've asked them to do and Ted's already working on next budget, certainly, absolutely. But it's kind of a thing, so.
Yes, those, I think we've got one expiring in twenty eighteen and so when those expire, those leases, then we want to take a hard look at what, you know, what we can purchase them for versus what those leases run and actually seriously look at purchasing versus leasing. Yep.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Question for Mr. Lasher, are, do we have to purchase it through the people we're leasing it through or can you go out for, go to different stores and get bids?
Yeah, that's the plan, is when we, when the leases expire, then we can go to any, any company that sells copiers and printers and stuff and then, and kind of bid it that way.
I'm gonna go ahead and move us along to city requested appearances. We have none there. So move on to citizens' concerns. I do have a form from former Mayor Gary O'Neill who wishes to address the council. You know what to do. And I want to welcome you.
Thank you. My name is Gary O'Neill. I live at forty-nine sixty-seven North Hillcrest here in Bel Air. I was looking over the agenda and I see that the new council oath of office will be on January the eighth at five-thirty PM here in City Hall. And I was visiting with Mr. Lasher prior to the meeting. I know this is a new timeframe, the way the current law reads for elections and when people have to be sworn in and whatnot. So it's my understanding that this is absolutely the last time this council will be sitting on the bench because they are not required to be, as I understand it, at the new oath of office on January the eighth at five-thirty. So I wanted to, at this point, thank these governing body members up here who've served faithfully and did their due diligence up here on this governing body. I want to do that in person to you. This may be the last opportunity to get to do that to all of you. So I want to thank you for what you have done, this governing body, for the city of Bel Air. I would also like to say from a historical point, in the past, I know the new laws have changed and when people have to be sworn in, but in the past, when there was a change of councils, the old council started a meeting, did some preliminary little business that didn't amount to much, adjourned. There was a reception held to thank the council members outside of the chambers. There was a nice reception held thanking them and the new council members were there also. And then they came back in, the new council was sworn in, they took over and we went on. It's all done the same night. So I guess things have changed now from the way they've done in the past. I don't have a problem with that, I just want to be sure that this governing body gets their due recognition. And I would ask that possibly if the city would look into on the eighth, if there could be something like that, so that citizens would have an opportunity to come to reception and thank the people that have been governing body members up here. Speaking of governing body members, I'm looking around the room. I noticed that this is televised and it's also on everything from YouTube, I guess. There's no incoming council members here tonight and there's some pretty important business on here tonight that affect how things happen in Bel Air going forward. So I'm a little disappointed there aren't new council members sitting here to hear this tonight. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to reports and begin tonight with councilwoman Marks, or, yeah, where did we start last?
I'm not sure, Mr. Mayor, but I would prefer that the president of the city council be the first speaker.
All right.
Okay, thank you. The only thing I have is I had a wonderful Christmas and hope everybody else did with the New Years and I did attend the CCVA meeting on the twenty-eighth, but I'll leave that report to the mayor and hopefully everybody will have a wonderful year in twenty eighteen.
Diane Nguyen? Well, as far as official duties, it's been a little slow over the Christmas holidays and that type of thing. I see Tristan in the, in the audience and I realized at about twelve-thirty that I had turned in a reservation for a chamber meeting today, but I was sort of mired in something else, so I didn't try to make it across town. I would like to say a few words as well. As my term of office is coming to an end, I would first like to thank my colleagues for their support. I would not even have been appointed without that support and I appreciated this opportunity very much. We have not always agreed on all issues, but there were lively discussions and lots of questions and all of us worked for what was best for the community as a whole. I was privileged to be appointed to reap the regional economic area partnership as a delegate and served on both the executive and legislative committee. That's a coalition of ten counties in south-central Kansas and we worked very hard to make that a very vital organization. It has a plan going forward because anytime anyone in those ten counties succeed with a new business or that type of thing, it opens up opportunities for the rest of us. And it's, it's been a fun group to work with as they are all elected officials as well. I also served as an alternate on the Wichita Area Planning Commission, WAMPO, our city engineer and serves very well in that top spot and I was happy to let her go to all of those meetings. But it is of note that for someone to actually bring a project to WAMPO, they must be someone who is an elected person. And so I think that's, you know, part of the money for the Woodlawn paving project is coming from that. That happened long enough ago, I don't even remember who it was and didn't have time to go scrounging to find out who it was. Maybe I should ask a couple of the mayors here if they remember because it would have been back in their timeframe. But, you know, those projects are always at least five years out and so it's important that we have someone who keeps up with those things and knows what, what's going on and what to do. And I was, as I was just kind of thinking back over the last year, I remembered that we had a discussion, I believe it was in a, in a workshop, even when we were talking about the new requirements for stormwater and drainage and those kinds of things. And I was very proud that the funds, the excess funds, shall I say, which are not really excessive, but that couple of dollars per month that people were paying was seed money for that and there've been other things that's been given back from that particular project and event. And it wasn't just me working on it, it was a ton of people. But we've had playgrounds updated with recycled materials on the, on the grounds and I know there are some other things too, but I can't think of them right now. But I was just very pleased that something that I had to do with a number of years ago because that was back around two thousand. So seventeen years later, that project is still bringing in value to this community and I, I think that was, it was just a great feeling for me. And I guarantee that I will still, as always, be involved in what's happening. I'll find some mischief to get into. And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you very much.
Okay, I have prepared a few things to say here tonight and I'd like to thank former Mayor Gary O'Neill for those kind words that he said to us. We really appreciate that when you show up here at the meetings, as you well know, and share with the council and governing body. And I would like these remarks to be in the record and I'll give you a digital copy of them so you don't have to key everything in, Stacey. I would like to say a few things about our current council, who, with the exception of councilwoman Betty Martine, will soon be returning to the status of active Bel Air citizens. It's been a very satisfying experience to serve the taxpayers of Bel Air the past four years and eight months. I once again thank the good citizens who elected us to begin our tenure in two thousand and thirteen and as you have heard already, it's been a real joy to serve with these fine people on this council. It's, they're just outstanding members of the community and it's been a good governing body. I'm also delighted to report that we are leaving the city of Bel Air in excellent condition. We've been able to accomplish great things in the almost five years we have served. We represent a wide range of personal knowledge bases and years of community service. We were able to put our combined experience to good use as we led the city in unprecedented land sales and the incredible feat of decreasing our debt by over ten million dollars during our tenure. I hope everybody makes note of that because everybody in Bel Air should be very happy about that. It's, it is very fortunate that Betty Martine will remain on the council because she has more knowledge about Bel Air than anyone else alive that I know of. And she also has an excellent memory. I hope the new council members will listen and learn from councilmember Betty Martine because she is a totally honest person and wants only the best for our city. She has no personal or ulterior motives nor any spatial interests she has to serve. She will continue to serve the greater common good of all Bel Air citizens, which has been the hallmark of our council for the time that we have led the city. We consistently put our entire diverse community of taxpayers ahead of any one's spatial interest as we considered every issue that came before us. This practice earned us some angry spatial interest enemies, but that comes with the job of being dedicated public servants for all the people. I would not change a single vote because the common good was served in all we did. I am thankful that Bel Air will also continue to have our city manager, Ty Lasher, and his professional staff, who will lead the city on a steady path. We have what is defined as a strong city manager form of government, which is a good system for Bel Air. Mr. Lasher always looked to the city council for direction and faithfully implemented the votes of the city council. As a strong city manager, he also makes a lot of decisions independently and has also done that well. This council has been accused by a couple of people of micromanaging the staff, but that was just campaign rhetoric. If the council has no place in guiding city operations when certain issues need to be addressed, there is no point in having a council or having elections. I am especially delighted that we are leaving the city with an excellent full-time city attorney. This was much needed with our rapid growth and is actually saving the city money from the previous part-time city attorney position. This council also found the money in our budget for another full-time police officer and a full-time enforcement officer. One of the first marketing decisions for the city after we were elected was to define our borders with tasteless, tasteful, excuse me, tasteful and timeless city markers. The great majority of these attractive Bel Air markers were donated by local businesses and did not cost the taxpayers. The markers are also lighted by solar lights at the direction of the council and will continue to save the money, the city money for many years to come with no electric bills. Councilwoman Martine led the way to the installation of a flashing light to slow down traffic on Woodlawn by our busiest city park. Our preference would have been another stoplight for pedestrians, but due to the deep ditches in that location, we had to settle for a yellow light, but it has been quite effective. The council also had bathroom facilities placed in that very popular and busy park in addition to a drinking fountain for both people and pets. The first year the council served, councilman McDonald suggested that the budget be cut by ten percent. The budget cuts was cut, was passed by the council and implemented by the city staff. We held a strict budget line for our entire terms of office and never once increased the mill levy for our taxpayers. In addition to keeping the city budget in check, this council decided in our first year that we would dedicate all land sales to paying down the principal of our land debt after the mandatory interest payments were being made each year. This was a first for our city and the first time we had been able to do that. In fact, our city finance director, Ted Henry, did an analysis of the city's land debt with some good news that I want to share right here. Had the city council not refinanced this year and only funded the required principal and interest payments from twenty eighteen to twenty thirty-five, at the two thousand and ten bond schedule, taxpayers would have spent thirty-four million, seven hundred and eighty-two thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars for land debt. However, we sold over four million dollars of land in our term and used it to retire the principal. This action saved the city about four and a half million dollars in interest and removed an entire year off the debt schedule. The council saved another two million by refinancing the land debt this year in two thousand and seventeen. Therefore, if you look at the original two thousand and ten debt service schedule that is, that this council actually inherited and compare it to today's debt service schedule, we have saved a total of ten million, four hundred and seventy-eight thousand, three hundred and seven dollars. I think that's pretty incredible and I think our taxpayers need to know that. In addition to all I've said thus far, I want to highlight a few other critical areas where this engaged and active council has led the way for the city. We established the land bank that saves the city a great deal of money. We made four million dollars in principal prepayments on land debt, which I just mentioned. We appointed Diane Nguyen, a qualified and experienced person to the city council and she has been outstanding. We established an excellent working relationship with KPTS. We improved the content of our city TV's channel, seven, which I hope there's a lot of people watching tonight. We contracted for a more functional city website. We contracted with reliable technical services rather than the expensive part-time provider we had in the past. We saved the city the blight of an unnecessary and ill-conceived cell tower in the middle of a neighborhood that wisely rejected it. Our decision was upheld by the U.S. District Court, which certainly validated the council's decision. We initiated a city-wide survey that established the fact that the main interest of our citizens was increasing the quality of city streets and keeping taxes down. That's two things we have really concentrated on. We completed over half a million dollars in street improvements over the past four years and have scheduled for more to happen in the future. We oversaw the building of over four hundred and forty new homes in the city. We welcomed over eight hundred new residents to Bel Air. We sold fifty-five acres of land to six new industries in our nationally acclaimed industrial park. Once again, we added a full-time police officer, a code enforcement officer and a full-time city attorney position, which were much needed. We oversaw no mill levy increases. We adopted Bob's Rules of Order to streamline our public meetings. We advocated for more senior housing in Bel Air and are now very close to accomplishing that stated goal. We advocated for realistic and sensible retail in Bel Air and are now on the verge of accomplishing this at the northwest corner of Forty-Fifth and Rock Road. And I'm gonna be excited to watch that happen from home. We maintained excellent working conditions and, excuse me, excellent working relationships with the tree board and Lions Club, both of our senior citizen groups and even the Community Development Committee for as long as I was able to attend as the liaison for the council and even after that. We kept our city water bills as low as possible. We hired the best real estate and marketing professionals available in our area. We fully funded our police department with a new comprehensive computer system for officers in the field, body cameras for all of our officers, excellent up-to-date vehicles and all other requests that Chief Atterbury brought before us, with the exception of a very large contract for additional lasers, which contract, by the way, the council still has not seen to this day. As a result of all this, we earned the distinction of the safest city in the state of Kansas, something we can all be thankful for and very proud of. We established new city hall office hours for the benefit of our city, citizens and city employees at the suggestion of councilmember Guy McDonald. We recently put into motion our shared WAMPO funding project to widen Woodlawn and install a much-needed stoplight at the intersection of Woodlawn and Forty-Fifth in the year two thousand and twenty, which will be here before we know it. This council took the high road on all issues before the city and represented all the people of Bel Air. We voted for the common good of all Bel Air taxpayers. We owed no spatial favors to any spatial interest group for getting us elected. I strongly encourage the incoming council to do the same and resist the temptation to bow to any spatial interest who will ask you for spatial favors. I challenge- I challenge the incoming new council to strive to meet the benchmarks the current council achieved by further reducing the debt, keeping the mill levy down at the current level, and continuing our schedule of greatly increased spending on street maintenance. Don't raise the taxes for anything unless you get permission from the citizens of Bel Air to do so. Furthermore, now that the courts have once again ordered the legislature to adequately fund public education and the Brown Back Nightmare Experiment has been stopped, work with USD 259 to complete their original plans for Bel Air schools by allowing all Bel Air students into the new school buildings and installing the high school athletic fields that the bond issue was passed to pay for. This alone will help you to sell all the rest of the land here in Bel Air because families will come in here and buy houses like crazy if they know exactly where their students are going to go to school. I challenge and encourage the incoming council to continue and expand on the successful course of our council over the last nearly five years and into the future. I will personally be totally delighted if the new council is able to accomplish this for the common good of all Bel Air citizens. And I think we will all share in that same sentiment. Thank you very much. It's been a delight to be here. And now it's your turn, Mr. McDonald.
It's been a true honor and privilege to work with such outstanding members of the citizenry of Bel Air. It has been said that Councilwoman Martine knows more about Bel Air than anyone else here and probably in the city, and I, you know, I second that. She knows more than, she just knows more than anyone I know about the city. I am privileged to know Councilwoman Diane Nguyen. She has owned her own business for a long time and she has that experience in back of her. So we have Councilwoman Martine, who has worked for the city for more than 20 years, and then we have a woman who has her own business. And that, that, to be able to run your own business successfully is, marks a special person. That's it. And so, and then we have Dr. Ramona Becker, who has not just one PhD, but several. So she has an educational background that is unsurpassed in the city of Bel Air. And I have some experience. I've, you know, I've, I've worked for international corporations and as a salesperson, and I know how they operate. And I have established my own businesses and I know how to run them. And so that gives us, that gives this council a, in my opinion, almost unparalleled variation in the experiences of the members of the council. And I think this is one of the best councils that this city has had. That's my opinion. People will disagree with that, I'm sure, but that's what I think. And I want, I want to say that what we have done, although they say something that I have done, I've suggested that the city of Bel Air put up signs that were similar to the signs that when you enter the Flint Hills of Kansas, you know, solid stone. And that, that, that was not just passed by council, but it went to the citizens through a water bill and through a poll, and the citizens seemed to agree with that. In addition to that, I'd like to say that I'm a member of a group called the Lions. And the Lions are an integral part of the city of Bel Air because every penny that the Lions make through whatever efforts they do to sell things goes back into the city. And a really good, exceptional example of what the Lions have done for this city. And I would encourage younger people to come to the Lions' meetings and or find a Lion who can give them an application to join. But the example that I want to make is that our, one of our former mayors, Lion Gary O'Neill, he wanted to construct a little shack to help the Lions, to protect them from the sun, selling, you know, selling whatever things they were, they were selling. And there was, you know, mostly things that, you know, I don't want to say ice cream cones, but it was water ice and so on. And so he started with the city to build a small shack up at the recreation center so that the Lions would be protected from the elements, essentially. Well, what the recreation center now has is a $40,000 pavilion, concrete base, steel post, steel roof, and chairs, and places to cook things. So that's an example of what can happen in the city if you have people who are dedicated to the betterment of the environment. So to go from a shack that's going to cost, you know, several thousand dollars to a $40,000 pavilion is a credit to not only the city, but in particular, former mayor Gary O'Neill. And so I don't think I have anything more to say. I think that I am proud to be a member of this council and am proud and honored that they have accepted me and allowed me to perform. Mr. Mayor, I'm finished.
I just want to thank all of you as well. We've definitely, we pushed each other and made each other think some different things. And accomplishments that were mentioned here, all things that you should all be proud of. So with that, and we will have a, on the 8th for the, there is the swearing-in ceremony there at the, that happens at 5:30. And do want to speak that we do have a small little token for each outgoing council member we're going to give to them before this meeting concludes this evening. That is just a small token for everything you guys have done. But I don't want to dwell on all of that, but talk about a couple of other things. And with that, Councilman Martine mentioned we had our CCUA meeting last Thursday. The, I am happy to report, we talked a little bit about this at the last meeting, but the CCUA meetings are going to now start, taking place here in Bel Air for our January meeting. And I was actually, was able to, I worked with Mayor Ray Mann in Park City to where the CCUA now is on a schedule. So for the next 12 months, we're going to meet here in the city of Bel Air. Then in 2019, we go back to Park City, 2020, Bel Air. Just seems to me that makes sense that we equally share. So do want to let everybody know that beginning in January that the CCUA does return to meeting here in Bel Air. And actually, we're going to have our first meeting, January 11th at 4:30. That's going to be a special meeting because we need to go over some insurance bids that just weren't quite ready for that. So that's kind of our big information with that. And before I turn it over, I understand, actually, I'm going to call Tristan up. If you want to come forward, she has, on behalf of the Community Development Committee, to announce the winners of the Bel Air Christmas lighting contest. And I just, I have to tell you, you guys all got to see my granddaughter up here for 30 seconds before the meeting started, thank God. But we had a number of evenings where she would make me, I know she's only three and a half, but she could make me, take a different way home to see the different lights. And we had mentioned up here on more than one occasion how many more homes were decorated this year, and some still are quite a bit. So it was, it was just really, really neat, but I'll turn that over to Tristan.
Like Mayor Austin said, I'm here tonight to recognize the winners in the Making Bel Air Bright Contest, which is the Christmas light contest that Bel Air has. First, I want to begin by thanking the 14 residents that registered their home. All were great and all of those homes deserve recognition for their hard work. This is our second year for the Making Bel Air Bright Contest. And this year, we did do things a little different. We asked the homeowners to register their homes by sending us a picture or a small video through our website. And then we posted every picture and every video that we got on our Facebook page. And we asked people to vote on their favorite by liking that picture. We thought that would be, the CDC Committee and the Community Development Staff thought that would be a fun way to be able to spread around how many great houses we do have up here that are lit up. And so voting started on December 8th and then ended December 19th at noon. So that gave just around 12 days to vote. And the total amount of votes that combined out of all the pictures was over 1,200 votes. That's a lot of people to come out and look at all the, look at those 14 pictures or videos. So that was really awesome. That turnout was great. I also want to point out, before I recognize the top three winners, that all the comments were so extremely positive on each picture and the videos that were on there. There were neighbors acknowledging neighbors, and there were people getting inspired for their own decorations. So I wanted to share just a few of those comments because I thought they are great. Jan Watts-Eckles commented, "I so enjoy, I so enjoy driving up to my house and seeing it every night. Good luck, neighbors." Jeannie Baker Hand wrote, "This home is awesome year after year." Another commenter wrote, "So it is your house that the astronauts are reporting to NASA on the GEICO commercial. Laugh out loud. Seriously love your joy in decorating for Christmas." Another person wrote, "Absolutely love this. Love all the lights. My favorite part of the season. Just gave me some ideas for my own yard. Totally want it decked out like this." So I thought I just would pick out those handful of comments that really show how it kind of brought together some neighbors that might not have told their neighbor, "Your house looks great," but they shared it online. Or how other people got ideas and hopefully sparks more and more Christmas lights each season. So now I want to announce the winners. Third place was Lily and Derek Duncan at 4842 East 44th Court North. And they will receive one of these fun Christmas awards. I will deliver it to their houses. They also got some recognition in the Bel Air Breeze and in the Bel Air Beacon. But this is their video, so it's 10 seconds, I believe, they had. I thought I would just share it so everyone could see it. So that was our third place winner. Our second place winner was at 5726 Perrington, Brad Moss. He had 301 likes on his video.
Thinking Clark Rizwald will be proud.
And then our first place house was at 5398 North Rock Spring, and it was Jeff Fisher's home, and they had 673 likes. So those were our three winners. I just want to recognize the winners. We'll give them their awards and share how awesome of Christmas displays we did have in Bel Air. And we hope, we are already looking forward to next year's Christmas contest.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. Are there any economic rewards besides the little statues that you've linked?
Yes, they, they did, the prizes were first place got free water and sewer for one month. Second place got free water only, and then third place got free trash. And those have already been applied to their accounts. So during the Christmas holidays, it kind of helps have a, have a little bit extra cash around at home.
Right. Pay the light bill.
Exactly.
Yeah, they'll need that.
Yes.
Thank you for that answer. I think that since this is my last night on city council, I think that I will make a motion to make a more positive economic reward to the winners of these, of this event. And I have no amount of money in mind, but I think it should be enough money to, you know, pay for the expenses that they have in putting these light displays on. So a motion is made. I don't know if I want to get a second, but that's what I'm doing.
Second.
We have a first and second that the city give, I just want to make sure I understand this correctly, a monetary donation, but we don't know how much.
I can.
And we need, probably we need to know what budget it would come from and make sure that we have it. Again, this is not something we have on our agenda and need to, but.
I'm not talking about a large amount of money, Mr. Mayor.
I think we need to definitely get some.
I will give you, I will give you an answer. And the answer is I'm going to say $500. And I think we can get $500 out of our, our budget. And I'm the guy that runs as a person, or I ran as a person who was concerned about the budget and wanted to conserve as much as I can. And I'm the one who reduced the budget by 10% in my first term. So yes, I'm going to say $500 should go to whoever wins this contest. That's my motion.
Okay, we have three, three winners.
$500 to the winner, one winner.
To the first place.
To the first place.
Before I call.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Are you talking about next year or this year?
I'm talking about next year and continuing after that.
Okay, so it wouldn't be to these people this year?
No, it would not. No, no, because it's passed.
December 2018.
Yes, it is passed. It is passed. It is past.
I would say we're going to have some mighty fine decorations in Bel Air next year.
Well, I think, let me just ask this, would it be, so we have the motion to put that in, and certainly, you know, the incoming council will pass the next budget, but we can, so if the motion passes tonight, this is something that then the incoming council would take as a, as a recommendation from this council. We can tell what next year's budget can be, but we can certainly make that as a recommendation. And I think that's a good recommendation.
No, Ms. Mayor, this is not a, a recommendation. This is a motion, and if the city council passed, and we have, I have a second, and if the city council passes at the 500, then this should go on unless the incoming city council wants to rescind this. And that would be something I think would be unusual, because I'm not talking about a great deal of money. But it's something that would perhaps not only alleviate, but in, you know, motivate someone to continue this process of Christmas lights. But, you know, it's a motion, it's not a recommendation, it's something that I expect to continue on unless some other, some future council rescinds it. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
I'm going to need to talk to our city attorney first, because again, we're making something that will then automatically, because we're not just, we're budget, we're not talking budget, but we're putting something, in essence, in a future budget for future. So what, what do we do here?
As the current council, you can make that sort of motion and pass it. You're just, I think you're very right to cautiously be aware that the next council can come in and rescind, repeal that action. So generally, best practice is to not do anything to bind the next council.
Right.
But you are within the authority to make this motion, as long as it's clear, you know, as to the specific terms, and I think you've gotten those ironed out.
After all, everything we vote on tonight is moving forward to the next council of the next year, and everything we did last week and the week before that, or the month before that, the meeting before that. And I really think this is possibly a great marketing tool for the city, because, you know, when you have fantastic Christmas lights, people drive around the city and come and see them. I know I, I go around, driving around to look at Christmas lights, and it might bring some more people out here to Bel Air if we have a really even better show next year than we had this year. So I think that's a pretty good idea.
Thank you.
I would say in our neighborhood, we give financial awards to our members who win the contest. I think it's just an easy $75 for the first, $50 for second, and $25 for third. But of course, we don't have near the resources in our neighborhood HOA that the city has. So that's my two cents worth here.
Is everybody comfortable taking action on an item that's not on the agenda?
Yes.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay. So we are binding the future for the, the budget with that? And, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Pose? Okay. All right, let's move on to city manager report.
Just a couple items, Mayor. As it was mentioned tonight, that city hall office hours changed today. And we actually had two people in before 8 o'clock this morning.
Whoa.
So obviously, we got the word out, number one, and number two, people are using, coming in early. So was talking to ladies downstairs this morning, and they said 7:30, and people walking in the door, and they were busy. So I think that's a positive thing, that people are going to hopefully utilize that and appreciate the different office hours. So that was, that was great. And then, of course, the, to finish out, January, city offices will be closed on January 15th in honor of Martin Luther King Day, so that's a couple, couple Mondays away. And then we get into the long haul till May for, for holidays. But that's the last one that's coming up. Thank you, Mayor.
City Attorney?
I don't have a formal report, just to thank the current council for allowing me to serve you. As you've served, we've done a lot in the past six months, contracts, land transactions, bylaws, along with all the day-to-day legal matters that come up for the city. And I just wanted to thank you before you pass the torch.
We're glad to have you.
We will move into ordinances, resolutions, and final actions. The first thing, I, we're talking here to the sewer agreement with the city of Wichita. And when Bel Air became an improvement district, a sewer main from 37th and Woodlawn carried sewage into the city of Wichita for treatment. Then in 1991, that line was abandoned, and a new line was installed on Oliver that ran from the Harding Lift Station at 37th and Oliver to 29th. And when the CCUA was constructed, all city sewage went then to Park City for treatment, and that left the main long Oliver simply for overflow. The city of Wichita began utilizing that main for Wichita customers with no one maintaining the line. Then the staff worked with Wichita to create an agreement where the Woodlawn line would be abandoned in place, and the Oliver line would be transferred to Wichita. In exchange, Wichita agreed to allow sewer overflow from the Harding Station at any time, as well as to renegotiate the 2007 water agreement. And the city manager was, who I'm going to refer to if you guys have any questions, and we've read the report and saw the information there in our packets.
I'd like to thank the city manager and our attorney for all the hard work you did to negotiate this. I think it's a great deal, going to be good for Wichita and good for Bel Air.
We still can use overflow to go into that, into that sewer line, correct?
Yes, and that's something that, through this whole process, I know this council was kind of involved in. The whole negotiation of the last few months of this, but this is something that KDHE requires, that if that lift station goes down, because a majority of Bel Air actually drains to that lift station, it couldn't set without being pumped, but for a few hours, then it would start overflowing. So we have to have something, and that was the importance of having that overflow. There's no annual fee to maintain that overflow, which was something we negotiated. It's simply whenever we need it, then we'd have to pay the bulk rate. So that's correct, Mr. McDonald.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall.
Well, if nobody has anything else to say, I'll give a motion to approve a sewer agreement for Oliver and Woodlawn sewer mains by and between city of Bel Air, Kansas, and the city of Wichita, Kansas, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second. First and second. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Next is consideration of appointing Jeff Hawes, Jeff Elsop, Justin Smith, Jim Benage, and myself to the Bel Air Land Bank Board. And this is because the bylaws of Land Bank say that the board of trustees shall be the members of Bel Air governing body. And as much has been said, on January 8th, myself and the four new council members take the oath of office. So this action appoints myself and the four new incoming council members to that board. And then appointments will run with the term of office. So Betty, you're safe, you're so offered. You've got that until.
Two years.
Yep.
So move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
First and second. Questions or comments? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Talking of recodification ordinance, over the last year, councils adopted ordinances, policies, and took other actions that affect codes. This is something that we do every year, so the ordinances incorporates those changes from 2017, officially puts them in the code book for, I can't think of, haven't done too many actually this year.
Right.
Seemed like we did quite a few the year before, but, but again, it's something we need to do, so they're all now officially in part of our code for legalese and all that. Questions or comments? If not, I'd certainly entertain a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion to, excuse me, I'll make a motion to approve an ordinance adopting the recodification of ordinances and of the city of Bel Air, Kansas, 2017 edition, providing for the effective date thereof, providing for the repeal of certain other ordinances not included therein, saving certain ordinances from repeal, and saving certain accrued rights and liabilities, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second. First and second, since it is an ordinance, let's call for a roll call vote. Ramona Becker?
Aye.
Diane McDonald?
Aye.
Betty Martine?
Aye.
Diane Nguyen?
Aye.
Next, as stated earlier, the Wichita water agreement was to be renegotiated with the sewer main agreement. Staff from both cities negotiated several items to be changed in the 2007 water agreement, which was set to, that's going to expire in 2027. The take or pay amount has been decreased, service area increased, water main along the 45th Street abandoned, customers accepted by Wichita. I think Dr. Becker said, well, this is, I'm very excited and thankful to our staff that negotiated all this. You know, this is something we were able to kind of take a look at a few, a couple meetings back, and we're excited to progress. But it is here before us now for approval.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to approve an addendum to the existing wholesale water sales agreement by and between the city of Bel Air, Kansas, and the city of Wichita, Kansas, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
Take or pay? Could you explain that, please?
All right, take or pay was basically, we were being charged for a certain amount. We took it, we paid for it. If we didn't take it, we paid for it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, exactly. That's correct.
You have to call for a vote.
Yeah, any other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Moving to our official business, before we conclude the meeting though, I wanted to present three outgoing members with, like I said earlier, a small token of our appreciation. This year, we rode, like I said, we've ridden a lot of storms over the last four, almost five years. The fact that it's been almost five years, we got a bonus eight months together. That was part of the Kansas legislature leaders telling us what to do down here. I'm going to stop my editorial on that, because y'all know how I feel about home rule being taken away, and I still don't like it anyway. But we, we're all here together, and we were with that when the, then the, you know, the elections were changed, a lot of things were changed, and we spent, just like now, with the land bank, and all things like that that we had to do. All of you mentioned many, many, many other things we did, and there's even others that we did. You know, the city history book is something that I think is something we should all be proud of, and many of you, I think every single one of you up here took a great role in that, and those in the audience as well for that. Our citizens survey, we talked about that. That was great to have that in those meetings, and we're going to see a lot in the, the future from that. I also think the city took great strides in terms of social media and technology over the last five years that I, I just couldn't imagine five years ago that we, you know, where we are now versus where we were then. Great presentation, just not what, 20 minutes ago, drive by your house now, whip out your phone, and 30 seconds later have a 10-second video up on social media, and people are voting on it. Now, to have 1,200 votes in what, 14 days during the busiest month of the year says a lot, says a lot, especially when we only have a monthly newspaper here. So with all the, and the, the city app, all the new technology and the new reach that we are gaining through social media, where we are building for the future. We want to be that city of the future for all of that. Higher in a full-time attorney, I think that was mentioned, but another great accomplishment that we did for that. But before we adjourn here, I'm going to start with Councilmember Nguyen. And we have, this is a city of Bel Air watch.
Oh.
And, make sure I got, and we will certainly help you carry this out. And I'm not going to, oh, oh boy, I'm going to go and pick it up here. We have insurance, right? No. So some Cargar piece, which of course, each one is unique, made by our neighbors, with the, the city logo there on the bottom. And these are things that we hope that you'll keep as a memory and think of us fondly. You know, you mentioned in your report that you were appointed because of the support of these folks up here, and that was great to have you come on board. I still remember working with you, the CDC, long before then, and know that your involvement goes way, way, way back. And I think you said that you're going to stay involved, and I bet we find a place for you.
Yeah, I think.
There will be that. Something else you said in your report when you're talking, I think it was the WAMPO thing, that it's 17 years later that you're seeing value. Things that governing, this governing body has done, I think are still seeds that are being planted now will be bearing fruit 17, 27, 37, 47 years from now. I just thought that that was, I'm glad to kind of mention that, because that is something that, you know, a lot has already been said tonight, for your service on REAP and, and WAMPO, we appreciate it. So I want to thank you for your time here.
Thank you. I may have to figure out how electrified this is.
I'm getting gassed up, yeah.
It's pretty.
It's beautiful.
And Ramona, just because I don't want to pick it up and carry it all the way over there right now, but for, for Dr. Becker.
Oh, that's beautiful.
It's the same thing for that.
Only different.
Only different, but the same piece and as well as the city watch for yourself.
I hope the battery works in the watch.
The battery?
Yeah.
I would hope so. If not, we'll make sure.
Does the watch a Rolex?
For that, what's that?
Does the watch a Rolex?
It is not. It is not.
Unfortunately.
No. And hearing from the audience, and having two former mayors out there, and I think it's Ramona, if I remember correctly, is one of, I think, and Councilwoman McDonald's, well, both thanked Gary O'Neil as, or as a good example of an active citizen, which is true, the man's everywhere. And his wife, too.
He's retired.
He's retired, but does a lot. But active citizenship is something that I know has been real important to you. Starting with Dr. Becker, oh my gosh, I'm going to do some quick math here.
A long time ago.
Well, it was almost 13, 14 years ago. Well, it was almost 13, 14 years ago on the CDC was where we first got to know each other. Both had the exact same passion. And we both had that, holy crap, how are we going to do it? Big question. And we are well, well, well on our way to doing that. You mentioned that you're leaving the city in an excellent condition. My late grandmother was full of wisdom. One thing she used to always tell me was you always want to leave a place, even if it's a public restroom, better than the way you found it. And I think that can be said of the city here. So do appreciate everything that you've done for this community long before your elected time here on city council and afterwards, and for your activities, I know in your neighborhood and around your beautiful pond there. You have some great neighbors over there.
That's for sure.
And great community. Thank you, pardon. Councilmember McDonald, yours is not breakable.
Good. I'm happy about that.
But I thought you'd appreciate a plaque, maybe more so than the RPS, but that is something, and I said to the two ladies, we hope that you'll have, and you also are getting a watch that you can look at and fondly recall all of your time here on the city council. And, you know, guys, well, you've talked about it a lot here with you, you know, with your true volunteerism on the tree board for, what, two decades?
A long time.
Well, to say at least, okay? Maybe that goes back. And, and the passion that you have for this city, the vast experiences with all of your careers that you've talked about and experiences. Appreciate the insights that you brought. Earlier today, you talked about the Lions Club and encouraging young people, younger people to get involved. I can no longer call myself a young person, but I would certainly echo that. I know that is actually one of my resolutions, was hopefully start getting involved again, coming to Lions, a group that just does amazing a lot of times. Well, they're thanked, but not, I don't think they get the recognition enough that they deserve for what they do for that. I would certainly encourage folks to get involved in that, and I thank you for, you know, what you've brought to the city. Of course, I've got to mention that meatball. I'm so I can get the recipe. Am I?
Oh, yeah, you can.
Get the recipe!
It's public now.
It's okay.
Yeah, right, it's public.
But with your, and Councilman McDonald is a Philadelphian, so Phil Phillies. I get that and all, talk that. But do you appreciate your time? Served what, almost two and a half years as council president after Ken Lee left? And certainly, thank you for all of that. And again, just wanted to thank all of the council members for their time. I think it was former Mayor O'Neil mentioned earlier that, yeah, we used to have, you know, the reception.
Thank you, sir.
And a good, you know, transition time, and, you know, with the state legislator telling us what to do, we just, we've got to follow these new guidelines. So you guys are still council members until 5:29 on the 8th.
Mr. Mayor, I have a statement to make.
Please do.
I don't think that, I can't remember anyway, earlier tonight, but Councilwoman Diane Nguyen is responsible for the recycling of materials in the city of Bel Air, and we have probably the best recycling program of any city in Central County. And so I think that I should make that statement, that she is the primary person who is responsible for that. And I'm not talking, you know, six months, I'm talking many, many years.
Six years.
Six years?
Because we started with the drop off.
Okay.
And went through...
Down the shop.
Went through three different changes of city administrators.
Okay, well, I want to salute you for that. I'll finish, Mr. Mayor.
I'd like to say thank you for the nice outgoing gifts here. That's very nice, and we'll certainly have happy memories every time we look at those.
I have no need for an executive session. Is any man, city attorney? He wants to have...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
First and second to adjourn. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. We are adjourned. 8:16.